We're good?
We're ready?
Yep.
Okay, now we'll start over. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin, Board of County Highway Commissioners, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Lander County Courthouse Commissioners Chamber, Fifty State Route, three oh five, Battle Mountain, Nevada. Also via teleconference at Austin Courthouse Commissioners Office, one twenty-two Main Street, Austin, Nevada. Via auto, audio conference by GoToMeeting, barring technical difficulties. Call-in details, one eight six six eight nine nine four six seven nine. Access code, eight four nine two seven seven five seven three. Website, W W W, GoToMeetings dot com. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And Brian, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from twelve o'clock P M. to one fifteen P M. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by public body, and items may be pulled or removed from agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
No report, thank you.
No report.
I went to the Public Lands Commission meeting the other day, and they wanted to put a letter of protest in to the B L M. on the A U Ms. for the Filipinos. And I got all the information from B R G. and I guess we'll get it done in the next meeting. That's all I got.
No report.
Okay. Okay, staff report on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. We don't have B R G., so I guess we'll go on down the line. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are...
You need to read public comment.
Oh, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Read that paragraph.
Okay. For non-agendaized items only, persons are invited to submit at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, the discretion of the board is reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted.
Do we have any public comment?
I do. So I just wanted to put it under public. Oh, yeah. Never can remember to turn this mic on. I've public comment. I want, um, September, actually it was last Friday, I received a certified letter from the State Ethics Board that on August third, I had been turned into the Lander County Ethics Board for a meeting regarding the pool pack insurance. The Ethics Board declined to investigate it, but, um, but they did take jurisdiction, which means that, that when taking jurisdiction, they can go through and tell me the potholes to avoid from being on the county commissioner and working for the Chamber of Commerce. And it's basically how not to make these type of mistakes, stay away from these and avoid these, which is absolutely wonderful because some of this stuff I did not know. They did dismiss the ethics complaint, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that I did receive it. They did dismiss it, but by giving me the information was wonderful, and I truly do appreciate that. Most people wouldn't think that, but I do because it was definitely a learning experience for me. So I just wanted to make sure that I had posted that under public comment, and if anybody had any questions, feel free to please ask. That's all I have.
Thank you. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Okay, number one, approval of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda notice, approval, approval of August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, approval of August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, approval of September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, approval of September twenty, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, and approval of payroll change request.
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion that we approve items one, two, and three of the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull number one on the agenda.
Okay.
So I'll second your motion to approve two and three.
Okay, motion's been made and, and...
Seconded.
Seconded. All approved?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, yes, I'd like to amend the agenda, and we're pulling comments, let's see, number four, five, and nine. And with that, I make a motion, we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, commissioners for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills. We need to pull check two one seven one four four, two one seven one oh eight, two one seven one eight three.
With that, I'll make a motion that we pay the remainder of the bills.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we approve check number two one seven one four four.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I won't stand because that's to my employer.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve checks number two one seven one oh eight and one eight three.
I will second.
We've got, Patsy made the motion. And all in favor?
Aye.
And I abstained, they're made to my employer.
Okay. Number two, discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove lifting of the current burn ban that was placed within Lander County on July second, two thousand and twenty-two.
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve lifting the current ban, uh, burn ban that was placed within Lander County on July second, two thousand and twenty-two.
All seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three, commissioners for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the request for an extension of time for the comment period during the Robertson Mine cooperating agency input.
This came up before when we took a look at this. We had asked, when John Shervy was here, that we could be in cooperation with them because we were not invited to that kickoff meeting with the Robertson Mine. And he assured us we would be, but in the information, it says that all the comments had to be in by October fourteenth. And we went, well, yeah, we didn't even know that quickly. So we're asking for an extension of time on that, and I think we should at least get our input on it, and we'll talk about if we want to have a cooperating in-person handle that for us or not. So I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda, or approve the extension of time for the comment period for the Robertson Mine cooperating agency input.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Patsy made the motion. Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're taming four and five, so we'll go to six. Finding for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove a parcel application for Robert Martinez, A P N. zero zero three dash one nine one dash two nine oh, oh, three dash one nine one dash three oh, and oh, three, one nine one dash four eight, located at one fifty, one forty, and one thirty, Guadalajara Court, Kingston, Nevada, eight nine, three one oh, zoned R one, and all other matters properly related thereto.
Hi, guys.
Morning, Colt Nelson for the record.
Jessica Walker for the record.
Good morning.
So this didn't go before the planning commission?
No, we weren't able to meet for him and to go on with business as usual. We brought it in front of you guys.
I see staff has recommended that we conditionally approve it on a couple of things, but, um, yeah, I don't have a problem with it if they combine all of that.
I know. Is, um, the, being conditionally approved, the tenant or the landowners fine with that? The conditions? And are they here?
They, we're going to call in?
Yeah, he's on Ryan Cook's summit.
Sure. No, I just wanted to make sure he was aware of the conditions.
Okay, are they online now?
Yes.
Good morning.
This is Ryan Cook with Summit Engineering, representing the owner.
What was that?
Ryan Cook with Summit Engineering, representing the owner.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
We just wanted to make sure that Mr. Martinez was aware of the conditions that were being placed on it.
I, I actually have not seen those conditions.
You guys want to let him know what the conditions are?
Yeah, we can read them into what it says there. Condition of approval, number one, the approved waiver does not relieve the applicant of the county and N R S. requirements for the preparation of filing of the partial map. And number two, per Lander County Municipal Code, all improvements shall confirm to section seventeen, point four oh, point oh three oh. Any found conflicts may require a variance permit issued by the Lander County Planning Commission.
Okay, that's acceptable on behalf of the owner.
Did he say that's acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are there any more public comment on this?
Okay, with that, then I'll make a motion that we approve a parcel map application for Robert Martinez, A P N. zero zero three dash one nine one dash two nine, zero zero three dash one nine one dash three oh, and zero three dash one nine one dash four eight, located at one fifty, one forty, and one thirty Guadalajara Court in Kingston, Nevada, zoned R one.
I'll second the motion.
Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to seven. Finding for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove a home occupation permit for Waynet Hensley D B A. Hensley Reptile Treats L L C. to operate in-home raising reptile feeder, feeders business located at fourteen sixty Palomino Road, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh, A P N. zero one one dash zero nine one, nine zero, dash seventeen, zoned A two, and all other matters properly related thereto.
So then all the neighbors have been notified, and how's it been an issue? I haven't received anything, having any sort of issue or complaint or anything.
They're probably happy if they have a mics problem, they used to say, hey, come on over, we have mics.
Have you folks done this before, or is this a new venture for you?
This is new.
This is all new for us. We're, we're learning as we're going.
Okay, well, there, there are quite a few things under the conditional approval after the, the staff had reviewed it, so, um, do you have a copy of that?
And you guys are fine with all those conditional approvals?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on that?
Okay, with that, then, if there's no more questions, I'll make a motion that we approve a home occupation permit application for Waynet Hensley D B A. Hensley Reptile Treats L L C. to operate in, in-home raising reptile feeder business located at fourteen sixty Palomino Road, Battle Mountain, Nevada, A P N. zero one one dash zero nine zero dash one seven, zoned A two.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Brian made the motion and Patsy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you, Steve.
Nice seeing you.
Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Finding for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove a home op, operation, occupational permit application for Alicia Anderson, D B A. The Earth Muse L L C. to operate an in-home, online holistic health and healing business located at six eighty-four East Fifth Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh, A P N. zero zero two dash one six five dash oh three, zoned R one, and all other matters properly related thereto.
So I see this is going to be strictly an online business?
Yes.
No traffic coming to the home?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this anything else that you need a state license for?
Yes, I do have a state license.
You do have a state license. Thank you.
Sounds like you got it all, you're ducks in a row here.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this?
Okay, with, if there's no more questions, I'll make a, a motion then that we approve a home occupation permit application for Alicia Anderson, D B A. The Earth Muse L L C. to operate an in-home, online holistic health and healing business located at six eighty-four East Fifth Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, A P N. zero zero two dash one six five dash zero three, zoned R one.
And that's with the condition?
Yeah, with the one condition that I had asked her about, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to number ten. Commissioners for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove a letter of protest to the B L M. revoking A U Ms. on new Nevada gold mine expansion.
Did you, did everybody get a chance to see the letter of protest that was written that they just gave us? Okay. Um, there's one, might make one note on the list of interest of public, they still list Caleb Bright as Lander County Planning Commission, so we might get with whomever we need to to get that updated, because... I think, I think the letter conveys our...
Yeah, I have a question legally, though, since, um, since the letter was not put out in the public information, do we need to read that into the record?
I think that you should, and I also have a, a, uh, public comment when you get on this, when you get to that point.
Okay. Okay.
Are you putting your reading glasses on, Patsy?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Are you putting your reading glasses on?
I'm putting my reading glasses on.
Could you please read that for us, Patsy?
Well, I will do that. Okay, um, in response to this, because we received a letter, um, from the Philippines and gave us kind of the information of what was going on, and we were all concerned about it and the commission, so, um, we decided we'd like to write a letter, and this is a letter that we are, that we wrote, so I will be reading it into the record with a motion that we have approved the letter protesting B L M. revoking the A U Ms. So here we go. Got to get the whole letter.
It's a long one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Remember who asked.
I did, I did. Well, that's okay, we're having a short meeting anyway, so here we go. This is to John Shervy, Field Manager, Mount Lewis Field Office for the Bureau of Land Management here in Battle Mountain. We have submitted this via email and sent via express mail. Regarding Lander County, proposed decision for Phoenix Mine, A U M. cancellation including Herea Ranch, Badger Ranch, Ellison Ranching Company, and Nevada Gold Mines L L C. Dear Mr. Shervy, the Filipino family has been ranching in Lander and Eureka County for five generations. Our grandchildren will be the sixth generation. There won't be an opportunity for them to raise their children ranching here. United we stand, divided we fall. And that is a quote from the Filipino letter. The protest letter serves as Lander County Board of Commissioners protest of the four proposed decisions for Phoenix Mine, A U M. cancellations. Badger Ranch, and gives the number, Herea Ranch, and gives the number, Ellison Ranching Company gives the number, and Nevada Gold Mines L L C. gives the number. The above Lander County ranchers received your proposed decision on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We have interest in the proposed decisions because the B L M.'s procedures and reasoning to reduce the A U M.'s set precedent regarding future A U M. reductions within the Copper County Allotment and Battle Mountain B L M. District. Furthermore, Lander County and its citizens directly and indirectly benefit from the long-term socio-economic stability of the ranches and their grazing permits. This protest letter has been submitted timely, as the time to protest the proposed decision expires after Tuesday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, fifteen days after receipt of such a decision. Additionally, pursuant to forty-three C F R. four one six zero point three B., the timely submission of this protest letter respectively warrants a reconsideration of the proposed decision in light of Lander County's statement of reasons for protest and in light of other information pertinent to the case. Number A, the background. The Phoenix Mine and Lander County ranchers both lease land within the B L M.'s Copper Canyon Allotment. The Phoenix Mine, located in northern Nevada near Winnebago and slightly south of Battle Mountain, encompasses four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine acres of B L M. land. The Greater Phoenix Mine Project proposes an expansion to the land. The Phoenix Mine acreage currently covers an extension in the overall life of the mining operations at the expense of the Lander County's ranchers' livestock grazing land. The issue here arises because in order for the Greater Phoenix Mine Project to expand, expand, the B L M. has to take away the land from the Lander County ranchers, whose livelihood runs with and depends on the land. Lander County understands the B L M. has already dispersed A U M. cancellation letters to various local rancher permities regarding its proposed decision to cancel a portion of their issued permits, which have been in place for many generations. The B L M.'s proposed decision will cul, cul...
Cumulatively?
Yeah. Cumulatively, thank you, there we go. Eliminate eight thousand six hundred and forty-four acres of land or seven hundred and fifty-one A U Ms. from the Lander County ranchers to provide for the expansion of the mining operations. Please allow this protest letter to provide you with clear and concise reasons why the B L M.'s proposal decision is an error and should not be upheld. Notwithstanding the foregoing, this protest letter is based upon the following issues. Number B. Canceling issued A U Ms. is improper. As you know, the B L M. approved amendments in nineteen ninety-five to alter B L M. grazing regulations to disallow for reductions in authorized use resulting from decreases in public land acreages to be treated as suspensions. After nineteen ninety-five, any reduction in use from a decrease in public land acreage equated to a cancellation of said permit lease, forty-three C F R. four one one zero point two, point four two. Thus, currently regardless of how the B L M.'s language is phrased in the proposed decision, B L M. asserts that any reduction in permitted grazing use equates to a cancellation. We argue B L M. is incorrect in this and this assertion. The Lander County Commission proposes that any A U Ms. to be reduced, if necessary and justified, which we argue below is not, must be held in suspension rather than being canceled. If A U M. reductions are necessary, B L M. can make the decision under forty-three C F R. four one one zero point four two A. Where there is a decrease in public land acreage available for livestock grazing within an allotment, number one, grazing permits or leases may be canceled or modified as appropriate to reflect the changes area of use. If a cancellation were the only option, the regulation would not include the option of or modified. Forty-three C F R. four one zero zero point zero five defines canceled or cancellation as a permanent termination of a grazing lease and grazing preference. It cannot be disputed that B L M. always indicated in the related E I S.'s and the proposed decisions that the A U M. reduction would be temporary and available again at some point in the future, contingent on mine closure and successful reclamation. B L M.'s proposal to cancel issued A U Ms. is detrimental to Lander County ranchers, who currently have a common use allotment for Copper Canyon. For generations, local ranchers have utilized these shared pastures to effectively maintain forage resources on current, currently permitted A U Ms. The sudden reduction in carrying capacity of forage area as proposed by the B L M. Will damage ranchers well beyond percentages by which the B L M. proposes. The effects of the A U M. cancellations to Lander County ranchers will likely jeopardize ranchers' long-term sustainability. Lander County believes the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two proposed decision Phoenix Mine, A U M. cancellation, should include and does not account for local ranchers' generational interests in the land. Further, the proposal must be rejected and/or modified because ranchers were not presented with proper notice. The cancellation of permits without a plan for reinstatement is unfair, and the nature by which A U M. cancellations were determined is inaccurate. Number one, Lander County ranchers' permits should be suspended instead of unfairly canceled. Cancellation of A U Ms. is also asserted to cancel preference, and any future allocation of A U Ms. after successful reclamation would not ensure the affected permities receive the A U Ms. It would be impossible for ranchers to maintain seniority related to relinquished A U Ms., hereby erasing years of hard work on the land to sustain productivity. Pursuant to forty-three C F R. four one one zero point four two, Lander County ranchers' permits will simply be canceled. Canceling instead of suspending permits will not safeguard A U Ms. in a rancher's name, nor does it solidify preference for the future when A U Ms. are again accessible after reclamation. According to page three of the proposed decision, and pursuant to forty-three C F R. four one one zero point four one, following the closure of mining operations and achieved reclamation standards, A U Ms. may be reinstated to qualified applicants at the direction, at the discretion, discretion of the authorized officer. However, three issues directly arise from this proposal. Number one, the B L M. has explicitly stated a... a permanent boundary fence project area will remain inside the allotment even after mine closure and reclamation standards are met. Because of this, all previous AUMs can never be reinstated. Number two, this rule only applies when lands outside designated allotments become available for livestock grazing under the BLM. The forage available for livestock shall be made available to qualified applicants at the discretion of the authorized officer, 43 CFR 4110.41. And, number three, under the BLM's best-case scenario, upon making available canceled AUMs, once the land becomes available upon mine closure and successful reclamation, all rancher permittees would have to reapply to become a qualified applicant. Forcing previous permittees to reapply may result in conflicting applications because it does not account for seniority. It is imperative that the affected ranchers retain preference for any future reactivation of AUMs through a suspension rather than a cancellation. Further, if grazing land is authorized on a non-renewable basis, the BLM has suggested there could arise long-term implications for ranchers' strategic grazing use management plans. The proposed decision places the best-case scenario of the nature of the canceled AUMs as what will occur. More specifically, the BLM hypothesizes the canceled AUMs will be available to be reclaimed after decades of mine use upon implementation of their mitigation efforts. If the BLM's best-case scenario does not come to fruition, ranchers will suffer a permanent loss to their ability to earn a living. Far-reaching negative effects on the environment would result greatly outweighing the benefits from mining gold, copper, and processing facilities. In addition to the above complications, a key issue with any forage which comes available for livestock grazing is a decision to permit grazing will be at the discretion of a BLM-appointed authorized officer. Additionally, the BLM argues that the AUM reduction is necessary to prevent overgrazing on unexcluded areas. To remedy this concern, BLM may decrease active use through 43 CFR 4110.32, where the authorized user may suspend active use in the whole or in part of a temporary basis due to reasons specified in 4110.3.3B1. Reasons in 411.3.3B1 include the continued grazing use poses an imminent likelihood of significant resource damage. Furthermore, if suspension was not authorized under the BLM's regulations, the regulations would not include a definition for suspension under 43 CFR 4100.05. Withholding from active use through a decision issued by the authorized officer or by agreement of part of all of the grazing preference specified in the grazing permit or lease, active use pursuant to 43 CFR 4100.05 relates to the grazing preference for available livestock under a permit/lease, not in suspension. In the interest of fairness, Lander County Commission proposes that the BLM revise the decision to suspend rather than cancel the AUMs where reductions in active use are justified. Moreover, Lander County Commission proposes the BLM drafts a plan of reinstatement of land preference for current permit holders upon mine closure and reclamation. Number two, calculating AUM cancellations utilizing a mathematical acreage assessment instead of a forage analysis does not provide an accurate depiction of usable land to determine said cancellations. The BLM proposes AUM reductions for the Phoenix Project and the Greater Phoenix Project as proportional applications to current permitted usage for each permittee. Although the allotment is common use, this reduction does not take into account unusable forage terrain where livestock cannot graze due to inaccessible areas because of slopes, rocks, and distances from water. The BLM used acres to determine cancellation of AUMs without a thorough analysis of the land. The proposed decision is improper because it does not provide an accurate determination, which was adequately analyzed. A, according to 43 CFR 4110.42, any justified reduction in AUMs appropriately reflect the changed area of use. Can cancellations determined by the authorized officer to protect public lands will be apportioned based upon the level of forage and magnitude of change in public land acreage available. Nowhere in the BLM's proposed decisions or EIS analysis does the BLM quantify where reduction is permitted, AUMs is appropriate to the situation created by changed area of use necessary to protect the public lands. Lander County's ongoing monitoring of utilization and actual use use levels demonstrate the cancellation of AUMs is not appropriate and is unnecessary to protect public lands. Use within the allotment portions not included in the mining project boundary is already well below permitted levels. Thus, actual data available demonstrates any AUM reduction is unfounded and unnecessary to protect the public lands. Any reduction in active use must be done based on the actual forage lost in the context of the entire allotment's carrying capacity. After all, AUMs were established following a carrying capacity analysis, which is defined in 43 CFR 4100.05, as the maximum stocking rate possible without inducing damage to vegetation or related resources. Carrying capacity is not an acreage calculation. Lander County advocates for the BLM to conduct a forage analysis to calculate necessary and accurate AUM proposed cancellations. Number B, the data collected as a baseline for the EIS is misleading as data referenced are outdated. The data referenced was collected in 1996. The 2002 EIS documents, two sample points, were collected in each range site that mainly consisted of shrubs. The AUMs estimated within the mine boundary are not reflected of actual accessible forage when taking the topography into account. The 2016 EIS contained no forage availability analysis. Thus, BLM's proposed decision to implement AUM reductions based on forage production estimates and acreage calculations is arbitrary and capricious. Number three, pursuant to 43 CFR 4110.42B, the proposed decision may not be implemented because the required two-year notice was not previously provided to the ranchers. The law here is unambiguous. When public lands are disposed of or devoted to a public purpose which precludes livestock grazing, permittees and leases shall be given two years prior notification, except in cases of emergency, before their grazing permit or grazing lease and grazing preference may be canceled, per 43 CFR 4110.42. Here, the BLM has decided to devote public land to mining purposes, precluding livestock grazing. Therefore, ranchers must be given two years prior notification before the BLM may cancel AUMs. The BLM's use of the EIS as a required two-year notice before canceling portions of a grazing permit is arbitrary and capricious. No reasonable person would constitute the 2002 and the 2016 EISs as proper notice, especially when the EISs were not clear and their analysis of the actual AUMs to be impacted. The Badger and the Tiara ranches have represented that the September 14, 2022 proposed decision letter was the first notice they received regarding cancellations of their AUMs. Additionally, the BLM must be enjoined if from continuing the AUM cancellations are already in effect, as the construction of perimeter fences proposed by the Phoenix Mine EIS has already begun. Therefore, because Badger and Tiara Ranch did not receive a prior formal notification from BLM regarding AUM cancellations two years before it began the process of canceling AUMs, it is improper for the BLM to eliminate said AUMs. Number four, the determination of NEPA and adequacy DNA was not enclosed with the proposed decisions. Through the proposed, although the proposed decision states it has enclosed the DNA, no DNA was enclosed. Even if the DNA was enclosed, based on the fact the proposed decision is not an accurate representation of the EISs and the EISs do not provide the level and type of analysis required to cancel AUMs, Lander County Commissioners request that the BLM prepare an additional NEPA to sufficiently and precisely analyze the impact of the proposed AUM cancellations. Number C. If the BLM must implement changes, the most effective way to reduce harm and negative future long-term effects is to work alongside rancher permit holders to modify the current proposed decision. The reduction of AUMs associated with the Phoenix Mine and Greater Phoenix Mine projects within the Copper Canyon grazing allotment affects four grazing permit holders of Lander County. Though the BLM spent millions of dollars backing their proposed action plan with required expert environmental analyzation demonstrated in the 2002 Phoenix Mine EIS and the 2016 Greater Phoenix Mine EIS, the BLM should not, should also consult with permittee ranchers so as to implement the ranchers' knowledge to foster a more desirable outcome for both parties. Additionally, Nevada Gold Mines, NGM, has created this impact and should be required to fully mitigate AUM losses. Before 2002, Lander County ranchers had a specific area allotted to them for livestock grazing. After this time, the BLM began to take the necessary steps to expand mining operations for gold and copper within the same allotment. Because open pit mines require the exclusion of livestock grazing within the affected areas, the expansion will have to take rancher land. Lander County believes that damages resulting from BLM's proposed decision will result in permanent harm to the livelihood of ranchers. The symbiotic relationship between both ranchers and miners on shared land should be better mitigated with rancher input. The BLM's scientific research, combined with ranchers' firsthand-on-the-ground familiarity, historically built upon decades of physically working the land from sunup to sundown, would only add to BLM's mitigation efforts. Historically, Congress has promulgated law to develop national grazing regulations. From 1930 to present day, unregulated publicly-owned rangelands have evolved into managed grazing districts in order to promote the highest use of public lands. W Watershed's Project versus Crane Gray, 632 F3D 472 477, that was from the Ninth Circuit in 2011. From the inception of rangeland governance, Congress created district advisory boards comprised of local ranchers to govern grazing districts. ID, through more recent amendments having broadened membership on district advisory boards, the spirit of Congress to foster cooperation, combined with the notion that ranchers were originally placed at the forefront of stewarding rangeland resources, further demonstrates how necessary it is for the BLM to consult ranchers affected by the present-day AUM cancellations to holistically manage rangeland resources. Lander County ranchers have been maintaining BLM for several generations. Their indispensable knowledge of working the land is paramount to maintaining its productivity, and it is in the BLM's best interest to reject or incorporate their interests into the proposed decision. Based on the foregoing reasons, Lander County protests the September 14, 2022 proposed decision to cancel AUMs and expand the boundaries of mining operation and asks for the following remedies. Number one, for the BLM to not more forward with any AUM reduction because AUM reductions are unnecessary to protect the remaining portion of the allotment land. And, number two, if AUM reduction will be implemented, Lander County Commissioners request the AUMs be temporarily suspended instead of canceled, thereby freezing ranchers' historical AUM seniority and based on analysis of actual current forage, taking into account all allotment carrying capacity and topography. And that's the end of the letter. It is signed the Lander County Commissioners and our county manager, Bartolo Remus. And with this is a certification. I hereby certify that I mailed and acclamately filed the foregoing protest letter in accordance with 43 CFR 4.422 with the authorized officer on the fourth day of October, 2022, by email, by first-class mail, postage prepaid, to the following officer, John D. Survey, Field Manager, Mount Lewis Field Office, Bureau of Land Management, 50 Bastian Road, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820. And then it has John Survey's email.
Might I suggest we fix the typo on the last page? Number one, it says not, to not more forward, it should be move forward.
But the letter has already been sent.
Oh, it has? Okay.
So, we can't correct it and send it anymore.
Okay. You can send them, however, a notice that that was a clerical error and that should not be contained within the letter.
Okay, then, with the motion that we ratify this letter that has been sent, that we also send a quick correction to this letter.
I'll second.
Patzy made the motion, Brian seconded.
We have public comment, I think?
Do you have a public comment? I can't go through a whole meeting and not say something. Lawyers just aren't built that way.
Thank you.
But I'm not saying this as a lawyer. For the record, hi, forger on. I'm saying this as a 50-year resident of Lander County and as a private citizen who has observed mining and ranching operations locally and in other locales for that, at least for that period of time. What you have before you is a request from a fifth-going-on-sixth-generation ranching family. These are people who live here by choice. They've gone to our schools, they've participated in our government, they patronize our local businesses, they pay our local taxes, they have a way of life that's endangered in activities such as the government proposes to put forward in this decision. What you have on the other side of this is a Washington-based government agency which is dedicated to its climate change religion. And its motto, I have heard from pretty reliable sources, is cattle-free by '23. I think they're working to eliminate what they perceive as a global warming problem because they believe cow farts do that. Can you take people like that seriously, really? We are not Washington, DC. We are not New York. We are Nevada. Just tell these bureaucrats, no. That's all I have.
Thank you. Hi, very well said.
Yes, we certainly appreciate your comments. And I'm so proud of this commission and our administration that's taking that attitude because, I mean, let's face it, they were here long before BLM ever was. here long before BLM ever was, and now here comes BLM, and like you said, with the rest. And a comment to your comment, it was just on the news that California is going to start actually penalizing the cows and their burping, and they're going to try and actually count the burps, and so they have to put anti-burping material in the feed so that they won't cost them so much. I mean, are we dealing in reality here? Well, I'm proud of this letter.
Agreed.
And cows don't fart, they belch. They're room, they have poor stomachs.
We're calling a vote.
Is there any more public comment?
Well, my name's Lenny Shepherd. Do I gotta turn this on again?
Please.
I don't know how to do it, but no. Maybe not. My name's Lenny Shepherd. Anyway, I just was curious about this because the BLM needs to clean up their own backyard before they tell somebody else. You can go from Mill Creek to Wood Spring, which is just before you get to the Narrows, and there's probably fifteen hundred head of wild horses there. Not one cow, no sheep, nobody's paying AUMs on those horses. We are, all of us. And there's no water. If I did that, Ron Unger would throw me in jail. And that's all I get to say.
Thank you, Lenny.
Okay, we have a vote. Brian made the motion, or Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that.
Yeah, thank you, Patsy.
You're a lifesaver, girl. Okay. I guess you're up. Number eleven, Public Works, for discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove the bid award to Battle Mountain, Lander County, Nevada, well six, water treatment plan project phase two, project W, PWP, number LA twenty-two-two-ten, far construction for DBA RDC in amount not to exceed two million eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
Recommended for acceptance, KG Walters, in amount not to exceed two million eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars.
Hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-seven, eighty, yeah, eighty-seven thousand.
Six hundred.
Six hundred dollars. Get it, committee.
Okay, Don Trent, Public Works for the record. This is our phase two of the arsenic treatment plant. This come in over budget, but I spoke with Lake and we have another project in the budget that will cover this, and then we can do that other project at a later date, which is.
How much over budget was it? Bye.
It was about three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand.
Was that?
Three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
And what was the, what was the cause of the over budget?
The, in phase two, the billing cycle never come through as it should have, and so it, just the way the budget works, it.
Oh, I see. Oh, I got you. Kind of lapped over.
Yes, lapped over, yes. Thank you. That was the word I was looking for.
When the bits come in so close together like that.
I know, that's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah, really, we're right on. Do you take other things into consideration of why you recommend one over another?
The, this company we're recommending, Marty has worked with him before on other projects, and he knows their reputation to be solid, so.
I just wondered whether their considerations are made outside of the cost when they're so close.
That was just off the rep, their reputation with Marty, he's worked with them, that's wholly considered.
We aren't mandated to take the lowest bid all the time, are we?
And as you've been aware in the past, the proposal was for the lowest and best bid. It does allow you to take certain items into consideration. If you take the lowest bid and it meets the specifications, then you don't have to worry about whether other items were taken into consideration. If you take a higher bid, then you have to explain why that was an advantage to the counter.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Is there any public comment on that?
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid award to Battle Mountain, Lander County, approve the bid award to Battle Mountain, Lander County, Nevada, well six water treatment plan, phase two, project PWP, number LA two-zero-two-two-dash-two-one-zero, far construction, DBA RDC in amount not to exceed two million eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand and twenty dollars, which was recommended by our Public Works Director.
I may have misheard. I thought you might have misspoken the eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. Could you maybe just repeat that?
Yeah, two million eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand and twenty dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, guys.
Okay, move on to number twelve. Correspondents' reports future agenda items.
I would like us to put the holidays change, or discuss the holidays. That's what we're gonna do.
I do not have anything.
I don't have anything.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, so.
Public comment?
Public comment? For non-agenda items-only persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend or make comment on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. Two, three, oh wait, two, three, three minutes per person. Again, the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner. Public comment may be based upon viewpoint, may not be restricted. Anybody have any things they want to put to the agenda items or public comment?
No, no public comment? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
This.